I think you're prematurely quiet. I'm sure.
Well, I'm just shy.
Oh, that's right. That's right. No, I let's start exactly at seven and I got two minutes left.
Yeah, there you go.
Right, that's exactly what's next.
All right, let's go ahead and call the meeting to order. We'll start with a roll call and because we have more members of the public present tonight, we thought it might be a good idea to say a little bit about yourself when we go around. That's acceptable and then we'll have a chance for Jason and Matilda to introduce their new staff during that process, too.
Kitty, if you want to start just going around, I can just take attendance as.
I'm Kitty O'Neill. I live in Colton and I am the chair this year.
My name is Ken Bellar and I'm from La Sina.
Priscilla Darling.
I'm Danny Fay from Canton.
Invisinette from the.
Sherry Shaktar from Moorestown.
Chambers County Highway Superintendent.
Dan Huntley, town of Pierpont.
Andy Gilbert, town of Parrishville.
Julia Rose, town of Braisur.
Matilda Larson, I'm a planner three with the county planning office.
Jason, planning director and we'll let our new staff members introduce themselves.
And San Joseph Planner.
Welcome. And we have some folks on Zoom tonight, too.
We do have folks on Zoom. I have Audrey Phelps, Cindy, Cindy Hammerick, Wendy, and a telephone number 14438656126. So those individuals will keep muted and then when they wish to speak to the one of the projects that will be reviewed tonight, you can that will unmute them when we get to the public comment portion of the meeting.
So we have a quorum.
We do. Yes, thank you. Sorry. Yes. Eleven members present.
And then we're on to adopting the agenda for tonight. I guess we'll sort of, I think you folks are mainly here about our Canton consideration tonight. Is that true? Okay, so what I would, we talked about this ahead of time, that we'll put the public comment for that project after the project is presented. And because there's several of you here, we'll put some time limitations on each person at that time, but we'll talk about that later. So the public forum will kind of be project by project tonight. Are there any other changes to the agenda?
Yes, we have one addition to the full reviews and it's a review of a digester local law for the town of Canton. So that will put number three on the under four reviews.
I'll move to adopt with the change.
A second. Andy and Sherry, all those in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? Thank you. That passes. Okay, so on to the MOU list. I'm sorry. Let's, let's take a look at the minutes. We all received a copy of last month's minutes in our packets. Does anybody have any edits, changes to those? Want to make a motion? A second. Ken and Julia, all those in favor of approving the minutes as written? Aye. Opposed? Thank you. That passes. Now we can go on to that.
Thank you, Kitty. So there were two, two MOU documents, the one that you received in your, your package last week. I'll put that above the screen here first and happy to speak to any of these projects. So I won't, well, unless there are specific questions, but there are a number that we reviewed that you saw in your packet and then I'll go to the addendum, which is newer projects that you've not seen yet. So. There are no questions on, one, go to the June addendum here and just I'll speak just briefly on some of these projects. Two projects, two are from the town. They have, they'll be familiar to you. It's a project that we reviewed back in February of this year for a sawmill. There have been some, some challenges to that particular project and the town has resubmitted those projects just to ensure that all i's are dotted and t's are crossed. So we reviewed those projects again. I sent them back for local action, knowing that we had done a thorough review back in February of the sawmill. There was an additional component to the project. The sawmill is being used to mill lumber for the production of of storage buildings, storage buildings. So that was something that we felt just to make a comment that there are standards in the Braisur zoning law that speaks to to that type of use and just to remind the local municipality to, to take a look in that section of their zoning code. So those are the two Braisur projects, subdivision for a, two lots in one parcel and two, three parcels, two new lots, one parcel, three parcels altogether. In Roseville, that was something that we, we made a comment on about specifying that they combine the lots. There is the intent to combine the lots with adjacent parcels because of their, their lab lock status. So combining those parcels or making sure that there's accessibility to, to the parcels is the comment that was made regarding that subdivision. I'm going to let a few more people into the Zoom here. I'm just like we have.
Jason, we can go back to the boathouse one in Moorestown.
Sure can. Yeah.
Okay, I, and I know, are, are they going to extend the bonus?
That is the question.
Because I know the neighbors are happy or are not complaining about it now.
Right. And that, yeah, let me get back there, Sherry.
I'm sorry, I should have.
No, no, that's fine. Yeah, so here we, the, the comment was very variance to 21 River Road East. The existing dock or boathouse already exists at the reference property. It is the applicant's intention to build a new boathouse on the footprint of the existing boathouse and extend that new boathouse to the indicated length of 51 feet. The new boathouse appears to come very close to following the approach to a neighbor's dock boathouse. So that is, you know, that's the concern here. Here, if I can zoom in a bit more.
Is that a water level related issue?
Well, it, it may be, but even so, Julia, this is where the 52 feet would be if it was out here. And it certainly does, you know, it sort of restricts access from, I guess it'd be from the, the west getting into this boathouse. So that, I think that's the concern of.
Are they adding an angle on the dock? Do you know?
And angling the other way? I don't think so. From the photos that we saw, it looked like the steel was in place for the extension and it looked like it was straight out. So that.
Because I know, I shouldn't say no, I understand this project was begun like tearing down part of the old boathouse before any permits were issued for anything.
Right.
And I do know that they have since had our core approval, but that, it seems very close.
Yeah, yeah. And that's, that's the concern that, that we had as well. And just for the, the town to, to understand the, the impacts here could be.
But they're already going ahead with this, right?
Well, they're at, at present, from what we saw in the photos, yes. So it's sort of a, maybe a, you know, and after the fact approval process, which is never the right way to do it, right? As the cart for the horse. But if the town enforcement officer realizes that, realizes. Then it could be, you need to issue a stop report for that, the project. So should, does that, does that answer your question? I, I don't, you know, from a, from the county standpoint, the, the county one impacts really are limited. That's why it was for local action. But certainly, absolutely, there are local issues, there, there potential for conflict between the two, the two property owners. But, but what, what we wanted to show with the diagram here was, hey, is this what's actually going to happen? If so, we're going to do something.
I, I guess I'd be concerned too with the property owners. I mean, down the road, if you get a real windy day or something, you can end up with a lot of issues.
Yes.
And we, we have a lot of those.
Yeah.
I know trying to get in Michael knows it's hard sometimes. I don't have anything close.
Right.
So it sounds like about 10 more people joined the Zoom during.
There, yeah, I can, I can read off through that. Participants are, again, Cindy Hammerick, an iPhone user, Jaclyn Wendy, another telephone user. And when, maybe when we get to the, the project, we can ask these individuals to identify themselves.
If they want to make a comment.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'm just trying to imagine how many people are going to like.
Right. Yeah. Get that list out there first.
Anything else on the MOU list? All right. Well, then we can dig into our full reviews. Starting with the Canton project, special use permit. So the way we think we're going to want to tackle this is we'll present the application first and discuss it among the board. Invite anyone who wishes to make a comment to go ahead and do that. We'll take turns. And because there's a number of people tonight, we've got a three minute limit per person. And at that time, we'll also try to ask you to try to not be repetitive and make, make new points if you can. And we'll, we'll, we'll hear everybody who wants to make a comment, who's here in person and who's on Zoom. And there will be opportunity for the board to ask questions and stuff about part of ours. Sound good?
Okay. Thank you very much. I just want to preface this project with a few comments before we get into the review that Preston and I will be presenting to you. There has been a lot of discussion about the proposal for the, the No Dogs Left Behind project in Canton here and staff has, as multiple staff have been involved with preparing this review. We've talked with a number of, of individuals on the telephone and in person over the last couple of weeks, I'd say. And just a reminder that, that our role here and from the staff's perspective, our role is to, to look at the land use implications of this project. There are certainly other issues in play here. There are issues with, with personal character, with animal treatment, with business models. That is not relevant to what our role in the review is. Those issues may in fact be very real and are a very big concern. But the, just to set the parameters of what staff is responsible for and what, what this board is responsible for is looking at the land use implications of this, this development. So that, so that, just want to say that because it is an emotional project. Absolutely. We felt that. We want to be sympathetic to the emotional side of it, but we also have to separate that. So, so we'll get started with the project and I'm going to turn it over to Preston. He started last week and we got him started on this, this project straight away. He's going to just sort of set the stage here by describing where the project's located and a little bit of background on the project itself.
Yeah, sure. So I'll start with just a description of the project. The applicant has proposed establishing a shelter for rescue dogs from the USA and from around the world. The property is located, as you can see on this map, for those who may not know, in the southeast of Canton, the town of the village of Canton, sorry, is highlighted in orange. And then the property itself is circled in yellow near the triple junction. The parcel question is located in the rural zone and it's 15.23 acres in size. And the applicant has also proposed a 10 foot by four foot double sided lighted apartment sign of a big, big property. Property zoomed in with all the six buildings located on the scope in order. So we started the, the house, the applicant decided to use it mostly just for residence. This two, two story garage and apartment, he's proposed to just use it for storage and residence. And then the kennel, obviously a boarding facility. We have a large barn for storage and operations, the small barn also for boarding, but for storage as well. And the small outbuilding for storage.
Thanks, Preston. Okay, so that sort of gets, gets the, sets the stage for the, the location and that are, that are on, onsite at present. And the applicant stated in, in the, in what was submitted to us by the town that no additional building at this time is proposed. So we're dealing with this use in the existing facilities that the president identified here. So going to the write up here, and this is just sort of the standard write up that, that staff has for projects. We share this with the, with the board members as much in advance as we can. We've been modifying this over the last few days. So always want to have as much time for the board to, to look at this as they can. But we did have to tweak it a little bit just with new information. So. So the reason we're seeing this project is because it's proximity to a county highway, excuse me, a state highway. State highway 68 runs adjacent to the property. So that's why it's for this board. Talked about the description. Now we'll get into the, the specific comments. And it, it starts off with a bit of a challenge. The type of use is what is a particular challenge to, to our review here. We know that the project or the property was used as a kennel, has been used as a kennel for many years. Fine. So let's look at what the definition of a kennel is. How the town of Potsdam defines terms in its current zoning code is it defers to a document that's produced by the American Planning Association called the American Planning Dictionary. Many communities do this. It saves them the, the, the time of adding, we've got a copyright here, of adding additional definitions as something new comes into their community. There is a variety of definitions for uses in here that, that are helpful. And what the, what communities will do is they'll sort of, they'll take definitions from there and, and blend them to, to get the definition that the community wants. So the kennel has about three or four definitions in there. The one that probably is, is the most applicable to what may be proposed at this site is one that states boarding kennel, any kennel where pet animals by another person are temporarily boarded for pay, trade, barter, commission or remuneration. Provided however, this definition shall not apply to zoos, geronaal hospitals operated by veterinarians duly licensed under the law. So that's on page 239 of the American Planning Dictionary. Staff don't feel that this really, really encompasses the, the overall use of this property. Certainly you, the kennel was there. There are kennel elements to this, to this project. Certainly dogs are, are present. They are being kennelled. But there are more, there are more elements to this, to this project that have been developed over, over time. And so we, we looked at in the, the current zoning code and we didn't really find anything that, that fit this definition to a T. The complicating factor, well, before I get to the couple, one of the complicating factors is, so in that instance, we've come across this instance before where you've got multiple definitions, doesn't really fit. There is a role for one of the, the, the boards in a municipality to play when this question comes up. It's the zoning board of appeals and one of their roles is to offer interpretations to look at what is in the zoning code and say, yeah, this definition fits. No, that's not what we want to have apply in this case, in this community. So staff would, would often, and we will in this, this review as well, but we'll make that recommendation to go to the zoning board of appeals and get a clear definition of what a kennel is and what is, what actually is applicable in this instance. The complicating factor is that the town is in the process of revising its zoning code. They have done so over the last several months. This board reviewed that document in March of this year. We're meeting across the street and it's an updated document. They've got a lot of more material in there. And they have something that more closely defines what this use is. So I'll read this to you now, but we also have to be aware that this is not what is in place right now. The zone, the zoning that is in place right now has the definitions that come from the planner's dictionary. The new zoning has a number of definitions that are embedded in the text. And they define something as our uses as an animal shelter. And staff feels that this really more, more accurately defines what is being proposed here. And the definition of an animal shelter is any structure or property that houses stray abandoned or owner surrendered animals for impoundment purposes for future disposition, including redemption, adoption, sale or disposal. That, in, in our review, staff felt that that was a better, better definition for what actually is being proposed here. However, at present, we don't have that definition to work with. It doesn't exist in the current zoning code. So that's sort of, that's one of the complicating factors that they go along with this, with this review. What is the actual type of use best in, that is being proposed on this site? One piece of information that leads us to the animal shelter, animal rescue type definition is that the, the applicant, No Dogs Left Behind Incorporated, is currently registered with Ag and Markets as a dog rescue operation. They receive their certification, I think in May 24th of this year. And it's good for one year. They have to recertify, recertify every year. So that, so they, they're identified or they're, they're viewed by the state department of Ag and Markets as a dog rescue. Buildings on the site. Preston went through this in, in good detail. For one thing that we do want to bring attention to, and I'll just go back to the imagery here, is there is a requirement in the, the code under kennels, again, if this is a kennel, that all buildings in play need to be 75 feet back from the road. The, the kennel boarding facility and this storage board in, or storage barn here where boarding is proposed are the, the required 75 feet back from the road. This larger barn in the front is, does not meet that setback requirement. So that's just the, just a little background on, on the building side of things. And again, as I mentioned, for no buildings, no new buildings are proposed for the, for the project or for this, this site. So capacity is, is probably something that, that we spent the most time reviewing and it is probably of most concern. What is the actual proposed capacity for this facility? Staff received two applications. The first application was, the capacity was identified at 50 to 75 dogs. That was withdrawn and a new application was submitted that had a, that raised the capacity from 50 to 75 to 125 to 275 dogs. That's a big difference, right? And that, that is something that is of concern certainly to staff in that how, how are these dogs going to be adequately cared for at that, at that, that quantity? There is also, was also a reference to the, the, the potential that No Dogs Left Behind will act as what's called a rescue team. And the number of dogs at that point could increase to up to 500. And that if, it was specified that if the state were to declare a natural disaster of some sort, where dogs were required rescue, they would, would take up to 500. However, there was no information submitted as to how they would get the dogs to Canton, how they would be accommodated on the site at that, at that, that quantity. We did a little more digging on the, the actual facility that exists right now. The two barns that, that meet the setback distance that are identified on the site plan as being used or potentially used for, for a kennel. And on the, the information that we were able to gather from, from the previous kennel, Maple Ridge Kennels that was there, we were able to identify what exists was, what existed onsite. And presumably, we don't know for sure, but presumably still exists onsite were a number of pens and they have varying dimensions, three by three are smaller pens, four by three are larger pens. And what we did was we measured the square footage of the buildings, looked at the pens that, that were in the, in the kennel. that were in the in that the kennel our kennel, sort of just did some some rough calculations. How many dogs could be accommodated with the the pens that currently exist on site? And that that gave us a number after doing that math of about a hundred smaller pens or the three by three pens or seventy-five large pens at the four by three dimension. So you know, it's mean somewhere in the middle, if there's a mixture of small and large, eighty-five to ninety pens. That that's what can be accommodated at present with the facility as it is. We know that the applicant is proposing more buildings. How do we get from we'll even round up to a hundred. How do we get from a hundred to two seventy-five? And how are those dogs going to be accommodated on site in in inside a a kennel building? Waste removal was another topic of of assessment. The applicant stated that they're proposing to to contract with Casella Waste to pick up the the dog waste. And that will happen once a week. There is no depiction of where that dog waste or how that's going to be processed and how Casella will come and and pick it up. We need to feel that a little more clarity would be beneficial there is that can certainly hopefully address some of potential border issues that may be a result of of this development. There was also no information that was provided to address the disposal of deceased dogs. Dealt with projects in the past, conversations in the past when it was had agricultural operations. And it was called cattle, dealt with in a certain way that unfortunately, some of these dogs may 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 expire and and how are we going to deal with that? Especially if we have a large, a large quantity of dogs there. That's something that really needs to be addressed. Signage. Impressed you mentioned sign earlier, ten by four foot sign is proposed. There are specific sign regulations in the town of Canton code regarding lighting and shielding and setbacks. And and we don't really have any details on where the sign is going to go on the on the the site. So we would look for some more clarity on how that sign, how the sign is going to be replaced, where it's going to be placed, what is, not not content, there is certainly not not, there are limitations on on review of content, but proximity is certainly something that can and should be reviewed. Fencing, again, good language in the zoning code about fencing and the intent of the fencing at facility, facilities like this is to to provide a barrier for sound and odor and visual barrier as well. There was not a lot of detail, very little detail in the application about the fencing, where it's going to go, how high it's going to be. That sort of thing that that really I think is necessary to to address off-site impacts for this development. Lastly, hours of operation. There is a provision in the the current zoning code under kennels again that the the town that all animals be inside between the hours of eight P M and seven A M. And the applicant has proposed in the documents we we received at the kennels are in your so staff recommendation now. Number of recommendations here are, excuse me, one recommendation, several six separate conditions. So staff is recommending a conditioned approval to this project. And I'll go through those in a little bit of detail here. First of all, started off with the with the issue of what type of use this actually is. And that's where we really need some clarity and we we would condition the approval of this on the town clarifying what this actual use is. What what is, do they want to use the kennel definition? Is there some other use that this better fits into? It's not currently in their existing code. They certainly could add that to the existing code. We know they intend to modify their code with this this new definition that would better fit. You know, all those things are are at play here. And that's what makes this project a little more, excuse me, a little more complicated. But clearly, we we need to get some some direction from the town on what they what they want to see or how they want to define this. Then we want to see some detail on on how the the two hundred and the hundred and twenty-five to two hundred and seventy-five dogs will actually be housed in the existing usable facilities. Use that terminology existing usable because again, nothing more new proposed usable, meaning can't use the the building that's seventy, that's closer than seventy-five feet back from the from the lot line. More detail on the five hundred dog emergency response. Housing, where are they going to go on site? How are they going to get to to the the facility? That would go along with the next, the next point about the the waste. And where is the waste receptacle going to be located and how are they? How is the applicant proposing to dispose of of deceased dogs? Signage, pretty straightforward here. Make sure the sign signage meets all the dimensional and form requirements. And then detail how high the fence will be. Then our last non-binding comments, so that again, the difference between binding and non-binding comments, the town needs to look at the the conditions are binding comments or conditions. Will need a super majority to overrule your decision on conditions. Recommendations can take or leave with a simple majority. So in that, that recommendation is just that they look to to partner with with SUNY Canton Vet Tech Program to collaborate on on staffing, health, and other other opportunities for for growth there. So with that, just give a list here. Got all the same, same people on that Zoom call, but turn over to the board for any questions or comments.
Yeah, Andy.
Hell's the posse animal shelter. What's that zone? That's the town posse zone. Use there.
Yeah, on Time Street. I I don't know right off the top of my head, Andy, we could look to see what that is. I believe it is, I know across the street is industrial. Don't know if it's is, I think maybe a business type use.
But it it would have to fit under one of those. They don't have. That would be the definition you use that they're that may be in the new zoning law for Potsdam. Would fit the animal shelter just like this, not worse. Yeah, I mean, you'd have to, you'd have the same, unless Potsdam has a specific thing in their code. Like
Same conditions with kennels.
Same type of an operation.
Right, yes. And and it has an animal shelter. August Animal Shelter. There there are five or six in the county that are identified as as rescue shelters. Yeah, but that, you're right. I I don't know right off the top of my head what the what the Australian Human Society is, what the zoning is and yeah, yeah, I would say.
Yeah, I don't see anything parking for customers or staff, you know, anticipated staff members to do this. You know, customers, assuming that the one type of customers that will be visiting the facility to either, you know, adopt the dogs or you know, and for traffic flow, you know, this this, this is basically a farm residence at one time, you know, to adopt kennels. So D O T may want to comment on, you know, usability of driveways on a commercial scale. They seem to be very narrow driveways. Is that going to accommodate one-way traffic and now so there's no traffic sign to the facility?
Thanks, I think it's okay just to respond to that. We we did have that conversation with the town code enforcement officer about about parking. And at present, the department, it's okay, according according to what we but you're right, as this grows, how how parking can be accommodated and where will be an access in and out is, that's a excellent point.
Usually D O T will want to look at a commercial development.
Yeah.
Whether you have proper site distance with driveways to make sure that traffic can flow in and out of, you know, egress issues. So D O T traffic engineers look at this.
Okay, Ken.
Thanks. Yes, Jason. I didn't see really any comments on what controls are there in place for sure that the dogs will stay on the property. I understand the kennels and all that stuff, but you're talking a hundred and twenty-five to two hundred and seventy-five, up to maybe five hundred dogs. And are any of the the dogs going to be allowed to run loose on the property? And if they are, then the question I have, since these dogs are coming from around the world, correct? What kind of breeds are going to be in that facility? And under the Ag and Market law, which I am very familiar with, there's a category called dangerous dogs. And will any of these dogs potentially fall into that category as a dangerous dog? Because if they do, then there's very strict controls that have to be put in place for kennels, cages, and stuff like that. And that's, that may not be quite a land use type thing per se, but I think it's definitely a question that is needs to be answered in some nature. Will the dogs be staying on the property? I am very familiar with dangerous dogs.
I want to tag on to that because I I feel like the kennel definition doesn't fit.
Right.
I almost think the shelter definition doesn't fit. Because those assume dogs that are pets that behave a certain way that are controllable. And I understand that many of these dogs, I don't know of all of them, but many of them are from very inhumane conditions from the meat industry in other parts of the world. And I don't think they like humans at all, probably. And they probably don't behave or can't be expected to conform to the normal pet dog behavior. Right? And so I think the containment idea is very important. And I also think the, you know, Don brought up egress and ingress, assuming that these dogs will be adopted out as sort of a normal shelter. And I almost wonder if that's not really if they're the dogs that I'm picturing, I think they're going to live the rest of their lives on this. Right. But they're going to live there for the rest of their lives. They probably aren't going to be pet dogs. So a lot of those models may not really apply here.
Right. And that's that's the challenge, I think, that we face from the top. What is this? Right? What is this? And if it's not a kennel, if it's not a rescue, or if it's not a shelter, and it's a rescue, let's define rescue. Or and if it's not definable, then the use would need an area, excuse me, a use variance. Variance from the existing zoning. Actually, the fencing, I can, sorry, just that, yeah, fencing, big concern. That's why we didn't see any exterior fencing. And that's why we wanted to get some clarity on on what the fencing is going to be. The understanding, though, is that the dogs will be inside. So now I don't know how practical that is, right? All the time.
Well, for example, if a if a dog is not inside, is it going to be leashed?
Right.
Doesn't have to be muzzled, depending upon the the category of a dog.
Sure.
Under the dangerous dog laws, there are very strict controls that are placed on those. So that's, I think that's a very important question that needs to be asked. Because if a dog sees a biker going down the road, a walker, a runner, you can rest assured they will go after that person.
Julia. To me, it's, I have a bigger question of this feels like an incomplete site plan application. And it's I'm sorry, it feels to me like an incomplete site plan application because we're missing waste location, which we, even in a Stewart's, we know where the dumpsters are. Sign location, floor plan, which would help answer capacity, fencing, food deliveries. I'm assuming there's going to be a whole bunch of food being delivered to this location. My other question is, I know some town codes, ours in particular, there's a area requirement per livestock. Is there an area requirement per animal outside of the building? Because it's not very humane to just keep them in a cage. Honestly. So to me, it feels incomplete. And I don't know how you act on incomplete.
I want to piggyback on that too, because that's exactly when I have my, that's exactly what I was going to say. I think there needs to be a lot more information with this. Those questions need to be answered before it even goes back to the let the town answer. Those need to be answered with this with this application before.
So then what's appropriate for us to list the kind of information to send back to the town, ask them for this information?
So the the challenge and another challenge here is that we, county planning board does not determine completeness of an application. The town determines the completeness of the application. If they feel it is complete, they will forward it to the county. Now, often we'll say, hey, we need a little bit more information for beforehand, right? And so we did get a more updated application with that was where the dog totals changed. But it it's really challenging for us to say, hey, you don't, you know, the town made a determine determination that this application isn't complete. We don't, we don't have that liberty. So all these points are excellent. And and I agree with you. There's a lot missing from this. And I think that that's where this our opportunity to tell the town what is missing. So they move forward with this.
I want to really want to be in the Kansas. And when I heard, I'm accustomed to seeing things where there's square footage involved, number of populations, that type of thing. It's very exact. It's black and white. There's just nothing emotional about it.
Right.
It has to be. And I don't see any of this. And then when I hear something that's between seventy-five and I heard all kinds of outrageous numbers of dogs. Can't be. It just does. It's just not acceptable. There's got to be for these types sized buildings, there's going to be an X number of dogs that can be taken care of in that building. Sure. And that's all there is to it. And it just, I don't see that. I don't want something left open where all of a sudden you can have like it got really out, carried away. More dogs and possibly get taken care of. And we'll be going over to other things, snow, everything. The other thing I'm very concerned about is because they come from all over the world. What if they have an outbreak of disease, there's something new. Just don't see this, these things being even looked at first. I mean, these things are very emotional things that are trying to do. I just want black and white. I don't see it. And I think that then we can look at it, not until.
Not to criticize the town planning board, and they don't, you know, like that, but we had trouble trying to figure out, is it kennel, is it rescue? Do they not understand that whole process also? To know which it is. I mean, should it not go back to them with what we've talked about today and call it incomplete?
They do have a permit to behave as a shelter from the state.
Correct.
As a rescue.
As a rescue.
They are looking for the language.
Yeah, it's
Registered as a rescue.
Rescue operation.
Right. I can show the certificate looks like this.
Ag and markets. So do we, do we know what does that put square feet restrictions, regulations on it? Probably not.
We've had some conversations with Agamark. Reach out to Agamark just to get some more clarity. There you really, there are rules that going to be that are going to be put in place by Agamark, but they won't be in place until 2025. So this this sounds like that it's maybe something that is a loophole for.
Another question, is there a noise ordinance in the town that would apply to not just the business hours, but to noise that might emanate when you have two hundred and seventy-five dogs barking inside a facility?
A metal building.
It will attenuate. So I'm just curious if there's any noise ordinance.
There is a noise ordinance certainly in place in 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 the town. And I think when we get to the comment section, members of the public here may be able to get some, give you some more clarity on that. We didn't look specifically at what the noise ordinance said, but you know, that it does exist, and there have been tickets that I believe have been issued already.
Oh.
What else we got, Dan?
Okay. For the people that don't know me, I represent the Board of Legislators here. And this man came in and asked to make a presentation to the Board of Legislation. The hat I wore was a classroom managerial accounting teacher for fifty years. And I've never heard of this presentation. No. Presentation started off, he was going to have all volunteers working there, and he had a huge list of them. All works is going to fill all of our restaurants and all of our hotels in the area, no problem whatsoever. And I said, well, if they're volunteers, somebody's going to have to be able to pay for the restaurants and the food for them. And finally, I said, me as an individual, I live in Canton, I could work as a volunteer there with no problem whatsoever. And he said, well, we're going to have a compounds out there. So I was under the impression he was building homes. And I said, you understand sewer and water regulations in a rural area? And nothing supplied to that. And the more the presentation went on, the more I listened. One that set me off the most, I'm saying with all these restaurant dogs coming in, I said, certainly say that as a kid, I worked for them on a regular basis. Pocket woman. In the scene of Dr. Irving Taylor. And then there, and basically, I asked him, after he had done talking about his veterinarian, what he was doing. I asked him, could I ask you where your veterinarian is located physically? Hong Kong is east. I don't know if a Hong Kong veterinarian has any right to practice in New York State. That's basically if anybody's taken, and I pointed out to him, a friend of mine took it. A cat recently to a veterinarian paid nine hundred bucks. Another friend took a dog to a veterinarian and paid five thousand dollars. And I'm saying this is all going to be, in my mind, handled by a veterinarian from Hong Kong. I mean, two and two are supposed to make. You know, I basically taught managerial accounting. My students had competition in the projects. If he had a percentage of this project, I would cut him in the middle and told him, basically, you're getting a NEF. If you want to redo it, I'll give you a chance to get at least a B. It's not a perceptible saying that we should be supported in village or town again. And I could add a lot of other things, but I think some of our citizens, I don't want to take. I had numerous.
And number two.
I live two miles from the location. I don't, if you were to take another Snapchat and put it up there, it would not look the same. So I I don't know how the person has gotten as far along as he has with the changes that he's made and the investments that he's made, the parking, which has significantly increased and changed. The buildings have changed. There's a huge cement pad that he's installed. There's more buildings that are built. So I I'm just identifying that I don't know how this, and it's not like he did this without people knowing. I mean, I've identified that this is taking place and nothing has happened to. It's very incomplete information, no question about it. But I mean, if the guy is investing this kind of money and he's not going to be able to continue, somebody's got to stop this. Why would you want this guy to spend this kind of money or more in something that he may not have the right to be changing or building? I just, something's very wrong. You know, the cart's in front of the horse. And we're trying to make decisions based on bad information.
I know the staff recommends approval, but I think we should make a motion that we deny this application.
Because of incompleteness.
Because of incompleteness, and I don't know if somebody wants to second that or whatever, but I make that.
I'd like to make four comments based on your motion, which is, again, I don't see it being, as Jason said, as our position, we've got to give this information to the town.
Right.
Incompleteness really is with the town, not with the planning board.
Right, right. And I don't think they have enough information either. But I think that in between, I think they feel they're between a rock and a hard place, so this is good time to thank you.
You said that they're going to do the veterinary service with who? Do they do they realize how many dogs they're having at this site at this point?
And that and that veterinary services are already stretched thin in the county, Kim.
Right.
It's very difficult.
They're going to have veterinary there.
Right, so.
I think that's hourly. Personally, you're getting into details.
Yeah.
I think they're going to have.
Yeah, but I think if if we're going to, and I think it's probably appropriate, Sherry suggested it. We do have a motion on the table, so we're going to be very focused in our discussion now, but I think I like the idea of denial with a whole list of information we think the town ought to be collecting for their consideration.
So we've listed all those things. I'm sure we've told those.
I remember recording. Okay, okay. I mean, we we talked about veterinary services. We talked about square footage. Yes, we do. We have a motion and a second.
I didn't hear the second.
Did you get them both?
I didn't hear the second.
Okay, thank you. So before we vote on it, though, I have, Dan, I do think we should make sure we know what the list of requirements are that we want to recommend. And the public needs to make their commentary.
That's what I was going to.
Okay, thank you.
I was asking if you can comment.
Andy.
There's a lot of good reasons why this project shouldn't go forward, but I think we got to go back to Jason's initial comments beginning of this discussion. As a county planning board, what is it that we have the right to either approve or deny? We don't have, we don't have the right to deny this based on lack of veterinary services, all that other kind of things. We have a very limited, we can't even deny based on the fact there's incomplete information because the town has already told us they consider it to be complete. So on that issue, they gave us the application. They deem that it's complete for them. It's not the county's purview to look at the application and say this application is incomplete. That's the town already told us that by giving us the application and making the changes that Jason.
I disagree with that. Totally disagree with that.
Sherry, it's not a disagreement because the town has the right to tell us that it's complete.
Right, but we've denied other things that we've sent back. And I have, what do we have, what do we have for information there? There are so many things that we don't know about. How can we say, okay, well, yeah, we can approve this. You're going to do this and this. How do we even know the town would do that? We don't.
Approving it, I think, would be an acceptance of this two hundred and seventy-five animals in enough space for one hundred and that's just, that's kind of a land use thing. That's a square footage and.
I feel the real reason for it or denial is definition. The town has not given us definition to fit this application.
Or cycling. I'm sorry. I think the town can think it's complete. They can make a mistake and forward an application that should not be forwarded. It is our job to protect the county. And so in fairness, it should be a complete application to be able to give an accurate judgment. If it's not complete, how do, what are we putting the county up in front of?
So we're basically telling any place in the county, send us an incomplete application, and we'll just approve it and send it back. If, I mean, if we if we approve this. You don't tell anybody in the county to do that.
If it doesn't meet their code, then we need to make sure that we're protecting the town and the county at the same time.
For the years that I've been on the board, when I've made a decision, I've made it based upon information that has been provided that I could make a reasonable decision on. There are too many gaps. In my opinion, there are too many gaps for this project for me to make a decision to approve with conditions.
Captain, that's in lack of of definition.
Shall we go ahead and invite commentary from the public at this point?
Sure.
Okay. You guys have an order in mind?
We can get the assignment sheet. Maybe we can just go down the assignment sheet. Yeah.
Is it out here?
Yeah, or can you mind grabbing it? It's just outside the.
I'll go first, Jason. My pass on the first.
Okay. Hey, Margaret, do you want to go? For sure.
I'll go up front.
Just a reminder, we're going to do a three-minute time limit. So we get through everybody who's here and who's on Zoom wishes to make a statement. And I'll just ask you, you can say whatever you want, but I'll ask everyone else afterwards to try not to be repetitive. So we can cover everything you have to say.
Go for it. Background. Mike McQuaid saw the application and sent it on to you. When we were at the town board meeting on
Sorry about that.
Monday. When we were at the town board meeting on Monday, I passed out the applications to the town board. And that was the first time they had seen them. So to assume that the town okayed it to get to the county, it didn't. It didn't happen. So and we were allowed to speak at the town board. They opened it up. And so one of the things we discussed was did you share the line? Did you forward the letter I sent you? Okay, this is in the letter. Hopefully you will see it. This is a letter that four of us proposed because we had concerns and we we outlined the concerns. So rescue versus kennel. It's important to understand that there is a difference between a kennel and a rescue. Before the town adopted the zoning laws in nineteen ninety-seven, Stiles Bridges had been operating Maple Ridge Kennel in the town of Canton for twenty-one years. It is the only kennel business in the town of Canton and is a boarding kennel. Because it already existed, kennel was added as a special permit use in the rural zoning laws. An organization's purpose should be considered before a special permit is granted. NDLB has been operating as NDLB at Maple Ridge Kennel. But the main purpose of the organization is the operation of a rescue. No Dogs Left Behind Inc. is registered as a rescue with New York State Agriculture and Markets as of May twenty-third, twenty twenty-three. The organization's mission is to provide animal rescue, care, and readoption into loving homes. Stated on, it's for the charities, the Char four-ten registration statement for charitable organizations, New York State Office of the Attorney General. Under description of the organization's charitable purposes is stated. No Dogs Left Behind is a registered five oh one C three nonprofit that leads the way in the global war against animal cruelty. We operate boots on the ground in Asia, fighting on the front lines to end the reckless slaughtering of animals by executing dog meat slaughterhouse shutdowns, intercepting dog trafficking trucks, and shutting down dog trafficking breeder locations in Asia. Our mission, however, goes beyond this and extends beyond borders by advocating for the creation and enforcement of global animal welfare laws. This type of nonprofit global operation bringing in dogs from the dog meat trade in Asia for adoption in the U.S. is a far cry from the boarding kennel run for profit by Stiles Bridges. There is nothing comparable or of this magnitude in the town of Canton or in St. Lawrence County. This type of rescue operation is not what the code was referring to as a kennel under special permit. NDLB is a rescue. It is not covered by the town's own laws. Thank you, Margaret.
Yeah, I think that's one of the points we have in our our video list. Yeah, yeah. Who's next?
Rita. Rita.
Actually, my comments are to be considered emotional. I am a resident of four oh five Negro. I've lived there for thirty years. So if it's all right, if I don't talk about the noise issue, is that the I don't want it, in other words, cross over into the emotional line when you are strictly dealing with the planning.
No, that's fine. It's definitely a.
I think noise impacts are valid.
Yeah, it does. Okay, okay. All right.
All right. So I've lived at the at four oh five Negro for over thirty years, and I have actually dealt with the barking dogs all those years. Now, the, what what's happening there now is we have an increase of dogs. Well, it's ear piercing and it's heart pounding, literally. I can't work in my garden, where you're supposed to be nice and calm and enjoy yourself. You're you're become just all nerves. And it comes into my house. I mean, you can't eat a meal without barking dogs. Right? Okay, so here's the other part about it. Okay, so we deal with these barking dogs. Well, there's another issue that's now happening. I'm not quite sure who brought it up, but it's about what these dogs would be bringing into our area. They claim they're all vaccinated. But that doesn't stop parasites. That doesn't stop other. You all know what happens with viruses that come across from overseas. We've lived with it for three years. So to me, this is this is a health hazard, not just for humans, it's for our pets. It's for our livestock, for our wildlife. I I don't know if you're familiar with this or not, the two dogs have actually escaped from the kennel. They haven't been located, and I doubt that they will. We have no idea if they're aggressive. We don't know if they're pleased. The public has been just told not to sit there and approach them. To me, that's scary. And it's scary for me because it's just that place is just across the field. My little thing here. Businesses have a right to operate and thrive. Businesses do not have the right to impose themselves in our homes and negatively impact our health, our daily lives. Allow Maple Ridge Kennel No Dogs Left Behind to expand without proper noise mitigation, government oversight of their operation is concerning. The health and welfare of our domestic animals, our wildlife, and our community is at stake. Thank you.
We got next.
Next, we have Leslie Clark.
I'm the next word of Rita. And so I share all of her comments. The the noise is absolutely deafening. Goes on for hours at a time. Sometimes it stops and you never know when it will start. So it really is unlivable. And I say this so that you understand that we've lived with Maple Ridge Kennels and dogs barking. And you know how you you learn the ebb and flow of your community? You know, I know when two houses down, they come home at night and their dogs bark for five minutes because they're excited to be there. You know, we knew at Maple Ridge, they were training. You know, we knew at Maple Ridge, they were training the hunting dogs, they're barking. Well, that's, they're doing their thing. Here we go again. They're doing their thing. You reach that balance. Um, this is horrifying to me. What is being proposed here is, is literally horrifying to me. I live in Homestead, um, quarter of a mile from there. I have audio of the barking that is, that is, anyway. If we ever want to listen to that, we can do that at some point. It is interesting getting used to some of that. It's not the fault of the dogs. And am I thinking is exacerbated by not having safe and active facilities to provide sufficient appropriate care for not only the sixty or seventy more dogs that are already there, and they just come in sometimes fifty at a time. You know, on trucks that have no windows. They should not be coming on those trucks. Um, two dogs have escaped. How did they escape? I would really love to know how they escaped. Did they dig underneath the fence? Did they go over? There's a huge fence out there in case you guys don't know. There, there are dozens and dozens of kennels outdoors, and he kept dogs outdoors, um, in Toronto, all the time. Um, that's on this site. Um, I'm concerned also about liability. Those dogs ran. What happens if a child gets bitten or a pet killed? I mean, my dog was outside. Um, who's liable? No Dogs Left Behind. The bridges, they still own the property. This property is just leased. The town? The county? You know, who, who? I don't know. It's complicated, but those are all real possibilities. I know also that, you know, he indicates that, you know, you have to be careful because people get bitten when they work with those dogs. And some of those dogs have been. I also wonder, how is this rescue now? Now operating for over three months, at least three months? Um, and they're just applying for a site plan review and a special permit? How, how are they operating now? The solar project on Mead Road, which is where we live. Uh, you know, it was over a year and they had to settle conditions. But this is not right, and I, there are layers to this place, and I appreciate a lot of your comments tonight. Thank you.
We have Kathy Schrader.
All right. So, um, I'm going to just confine my premise to three things. One, one does have to do with land use planning or implications. And that is, um, an environmental impact because it relates to the waste management, but that amount of even liquid waste. I mean, there are wetlands on the back of that property. And so I think that's something that the county should and the town should think about is just the impact on the, on the wetlands and also the groundwater for people in, in that area. Um, you know, there is, there's nothing in any of his plans that indicate what he's going to do about that. Another gap in the plans that they need to receive. Um, and just to add a little bit more information, um, to piggyback, there, there is now a big fence, so, you know. And so again, carpet for the horse, there's certain regulations. There's already a fence though. Whether it meets those regulations or not, I don't know, but. Um, and again, the definition, um, and we're talking about the dangerous dog category, and this is just hearsay, but I, I've met with Jeffrey Berry, the person who's, um, you know, my dog Left Behind a couple of times. And again, this is just him talking to me, but he told me, and so this is where defining that sort of what is this place? Really? He said, a lot of these dogs are too traumatized. They will never be adopted. They will be here forever. So that is a sanctuary. That's, and, and they're, they're not adoptable because many of them are too dangerous. And I was there. I saw some of them, and he said, don't go near that cage. Do not touch these dogs. So again, this is just me saying this, but to confirm some of those, those concerns. Um, yeah, so I'll save my time for the next.
That, that is all the, uh, people that we have on the sign in sheet to speak. Not sure if anyone else that business side is speaking.
Probably just can't read my hand, but.
Michael. Michael.
I was on a rush to get in here. So my name is, is Michael Heaney. Uh, I'm a relatively new resident of Canton. I've retired from X A and M four years ago. I love this town. I really love this town. People ask me, why would you move here? It's terrific. We have a terrific, peaceful setting here. I used to train, I'm a dog lover. I used to train dogs at Styles Place all the time. Uh, I have to admit that right up front, I think it's fair to say that I am totally against the whole concept of No Dogs Left Behind. I'm against the concept of open, open borders for foreign dogs. And we have a lot of homeless creatures here that we're not doing a favor by importing dogs that need a place to go. So that's just, this, me to say that. So I'm, I'm one of the first people that met Jeffrey. I met him while I was over at Styles Place and, um, he had two dogs with him. And he said something to the effect of, don't get any closer because those dogs might attack you, attack your car. My hearing's not very good, so I can't tell exactly what he said, but it was something like that. I didn't think much of it. Well, my next meeting with Jeff, I was in the, uh, in Styles Man Cave. I don't know if you've been in there, but uh, we're real close. And he's going on about his heroics and whatnot in, in Asia, et cetera, et cetera, and talking about all the places he's built and this and that. And I asked, well, huh, you know, just what do you do with all the dog waste? And he looked at me and he said, we'll figure that out. And what I could think was, boy, that's something you should figure out like right off the bat. That's the number one challenge. So automatically, so then I just thought, wow, huh, how many of these places have you built? And he looked right at me and he said, six or seven. And I thought, six or seven of multi-million dollar facilities? You don't know if it's six or seven, and along the way between six and seven, you hadn't figured out how to take care of the dog waste? That was the birth of my concern right there. And you folks have said things like, this is incomplete, and this, we need more information, is that? This is the norm. Someone else said this doesn't add up. Don't expect it to add up. Don't ever expect it to add up. None of it adds up. Okay, it is really, it is as one of my buddies called it. I wish I could say I, I made this up. Ready, fire, aim. All right. He was bringing dogs in. He didn't have a place to put them. He didn't have an act market's permit. He didn't, I mean, registration. He didn't have a permit from the town. He just moved right in with a string of dogs, started putting them wherever he could find places to put. And that's where it's continued. He just keeps bringing in more dogs and it's getting louder. He's more dogs, more dogs, more dogs. He, he, if there's a plan, I, I can't see it. It's really just that it, it's sort of like, you know, it's sort of like a drunk man stumbling around in a dark room trying to find a light switch. There is just nothing, there is, so observation, the dangers, groundwater. You know, that groundwater, the surface water will react with the groundwater, become groundwater, and will react with your brooks, everything. Boyden Brook is in front of the property, Rass Brooks is in back of the property. Okay. The fecal matter, he says he's going to go, go the Casella route. Okay. I called him and they said they do have a contract with him. But at the same time, that stuff's going into the, into a landfill now. And that, you know, back of the actual envelope calculation, that should be about three hundred and sixty, you know, thirty-six thousand five hundred pounds of dog waste a year. That's a lot of stuff that, you know, these fills are already taxed.
Thank you, Michael.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Do we have anyone on Zoom who wishes to also make a statement?
Can I ask one question? Was a seeker done, required?
It was not submitted with the application.
What was your question?
Was a seeker done, required?
And the, and that, it goes back to type of use, right? If we don't know what this is, we, how can we do a seeker on something? So if it is existing, if it's an existing kennel, seeker is not required for an existing kennel. Uh, this is, it was an existing kennel that is now become a different use, so.
They're trying to do their business through the existing use and hoping that that's how everything's squeezed through.
It was.
Okay.
Dan?
You know, when, when you're looking at the definition, that will go back to get to say something. Onland non-conforming use, because it doesn't meet the definition. That's where I think we have our ability to comment on. It's non-conform use. It doesn't meet the definition within the code of a kennel. So if there's nothing in the code, then if we deny it, certainly the town that, uh, but, uh, they, they would have to, you know, go to their zoning board reveals.
A special use permit.
Or a special use permit. But at this point, I, I believe it's non-conforming use uh, because it doesn't meet the definition of, of, of a kennel. And, you know, Jason, uh, read that out to us, and it's clear to me, to me anyway, that what's proposed, uh, doesn't meet the definition in the town's code, therefore it's non-conforming.
Do we have anyone on Zoom who wants to make a comment?
I think there are some chat messages in there, if you can see them.
Okay, yeah, is it okay? I'll, I'll read through the chat. If anyone else wants to speak, maybe we'll read through the chat first and then. Okay, I'll start at the beginning. Uh, and I'll read the, the name of the, uh, the writer Cindy Hammer writes, if they are adopting out of this facility, how does that work? Sales taxes seems more commercial in nature than merely a kennel. Jacqueline writes, how can this be approved without proven confirmation that he has space to comply with the kennel requirements? I'll bring all two hundred and seventy-five dogs inside at night. If we could ask. We're muted. Hello? Okay, we're muted. So, okay, I'll keep reading. Yes, Audrey Phelps writes, also, who will be in charge of oversight of the conditions if this is approved? What are the consequences if any of the conditions are not met? Cindy, again, writes, to the plight of a dog chasing a biker, two huskies have already escaped the location and are wandering loose. Audrey felt writes, does the amount of dogs on the application include the number of dogs expected to be boarded? We should at least have an estimate to the average number of dogs from prior years. Do you know if the huskies were dogs from No Dogs Left Behind or dogs in boarding? Audrey again writes, while it may be slightly unrelated, it's worth exploring the details surrounding No Dogs Left Behind. According to their website, there have been, uh, they have been involved in dog adoptions since twenty seventeen in New York. However, it is curious that they are just now in the process of applying for official recognition as a rescue. The situation invites us to examine their intentions and transparency with a gentle curiosity. Cindy again writes, you need to investigate what he did when he ran a shelter, which he called a kennel in Toronto. He was evicted and several of the concerns raised here were the same issues that existed in Toronto. Audrey writes, thank you, Cindy. It seems crucial to conduct a thorough investigation into the organization's previous experience running a shelter in Toronto, particularly if there were concerns which can be fact checked. That raised, uh, that mirror, that raised that mirror the issues being discussed here. Investigating this history could provide valuable insights into the organization track record and shed light on any reoccurring patterns that may be relevant to our current considerations. I heard, Kelly Smith writes, I heard he imported hundreds of dogs with uh, Leig, L E A I G M A N I A S I S. Leig Manyasis. Do you know? Okay. Oh, sorry. It's corrected to L leash media. A fatal parasite is what it, okay. That's the extent of the chat.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor.
In a second.
In a second. To deny. Uh, is there any more discussion of that? Do we want to?
We, we need to deny for what reason?
For what reason?
To list reasoning, I would assume. Otherwise, we're not assisting the town whatsoever. Why they should also.
If we need a new motion that specifies the use, we can undo the motion we already have and redo it. I, I like Don's idea that it is a non-conforming use. Um, unless there's a comment from you that we need interpretation from the Z B A first.
Well, that, that is where, again, that's sort of the crux of the whole thing is, is the, we, we just don't have that information, information, right? The town, uh, has the authority to interpret their code to determine whether or not what they're proposing is a kennel. We can certainly express the board's opinions that, that they, that you, and again, I don't want to speak for you, but that the board does not, this is a kennel. Uh, and that therefore it requires a use variance. That is certainly something that, that you can can state. And whether it's, uh, whether it's a condition, you know, the conditions here I think should be listed as well because they, uh, because they speak to some of the concerns that we have and as well as additional concerns that were raised by the board here. So, and we can do that, uh, that the, uh, language, something like the town or wishes to deny the project because the the, uh, information that was provided does not address the all that, the tell them over here, all the, uh, well, does not address the questions that were asked by the board and it's not addressed whether or not the use is an actual permitted use in the district. And I think that that, that really is where, where you want to go with a denial. It doesn't, it doesn't seem to be.
Who made the motion?
Don.
But I believe once you have the Roberts rules, they would have to draw their motions.
They gotta both, they gotta both agree to withdraw.
Right.
Both that, okay. And then Don's, Don's motion would be.
Sharon made the motion. So we, does the second and the motion agree to withdraw?
Don and Ed. I mean, Sharon and Ed.
What I need to do.
You need to, you need to withdraw your.
I'll withdraw.
And he would be.
You're buying it. You do the right thing. The second is wrong. So they're both withdrawn, so we can make a new motion.
I, I make a, a motion that we deny this, uh, application based, uh, the fact that it doesn't provided in town code of a kennel. Therefore, it's a non-conforming use.
And is there a second? Dan Huntley. Are we ready to vote on that? Are we going to list the reasonings? I think we need to list everything that's listed, what Jason said in a minute ago, all the conditions, all the recommendations he already listed, plus the ones we've, um, given some of the new staff now. I think they have to listen to hours of our recording.
You have them all.
And you have them all covered.
What I have for notes are, uh, parking for customers and staff to visit the facility with potential to adopt and to deal with circulation on site. DOT, uh, traffic engineer may want to comment on the existing access road and the growing scale of the commercial development. Uh, Bella indicated, oh, what controls are in place to keep dogs on the property? Will they be allowed to roam outside? Uh, if the dogs fall under a dangerous dog category, additional provisions are required such as leeching and muscling. Uh, kennel definition doesn't fit according, that's Kitty's, uh, notes. And that the proposed use may not necessarily conform to either sink, uh, to kennel or shelter, but rather as a sanctuary, which is not defined. Uh, and if it is a sanctuary, a use variance would be required. No exterior fencing had been specified. The, uh, site plan was incomplete. Uh, as there appears to be new construction on site that isn't accurately depicted in the. that isn't accurately depicted in the site plan. Uh, and that there is some, maybe that the applicant should submit an explanation on the quarantine of dogs before they are introduced. I think that happens, uh, when dogs do arrive from across, uh, across the seas, but that should be detailed as a part of the application process. Uh, whether or not the proposed use is consistent with the town's existing noise ordinance.
Disposal of dogs.
Uh, to detail the disposal of dogs, right? These are in addition to what Jason already listed.
I did want to make sure that we get, uh, for the square footage, how many animals.
Yes, and that there should be a floor plan included that depicts the number.
And therefore also a maximum occupancy. And given. Given the, um, huge, uh, jump in occupancy, I feel, and it doesn't meet, we don't think it meets the, the definition, there should be a secret on, because of the environmental impacts of the waste and operation.
Oh, safety.
Safety, yeah.
I don't know if that's our.
One of the items that was discussed multiple times was, how did this project get to the point where it currently is without any intervention from, say, for example, the code enforcement officer shutting it down?
I think it's because the, of the longstanding confusion about what is this use?
But if there was a confusion, you, you stop, you shut it down until it gets resolved. I think, and this came up a number of times saying, basically, how did this project get to where it is today? Without approval? And, and I think that's a valid question. We're not going to solve it here, but that's a question that needs to really go back on this, saying, timeout, how did this progress to where it is without any intervention prior to tonight?
Go ahead.
First, he brought in one of my. This will continue. I don't know if there's a mechanism to.
I feel like this mechanism is, I'm going to move them in because it's under kennel and then you're all going to look like bad people when you ask me to stop.
That's possible. We can't really, we're not in a position to consider everything that was, all the good points that were made tonight. We can only consider and comment on planning related. And I think we've done that. I think we've got a pretty good list. We have a motion that's been seconded to deny based on nonconforming use with a whole list of recommendations for the town.
All of those, yep.
Yeah. Ready to take a vote? All those in favor of the denial? Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Any abstentions? Motion to deny passes. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Okay. Got two more.
Thank you for everyone who joined us for comments and discussion.
Hey.
Hey.
That was item number one on the agenda. You want a little?
Just five minutes.
Five minutes? No. That's why I.
Need intersect.
That's right. That's it.
Need go.
Yeah.
I think.
Oh, God.
I was just supposed to.
I'm looking at his signature, I'm like, you can't read this.
So I know. There's. Is that everybody? Ready to dive back into the next project?
We are, just, like, just saying one time, uh, it's for John's benefit. John Cassidy is the, uh, county, excuse me, the town and the planning board, and just for next steps with this project. So, so what we'll do is we'll write this up, uh, with the action that you took tonight as the denial, list everything off, uh, and then we'll return it to, it was, came to us through the town planning board, so we'll send it back to the town planning board, so they'll have it for their next meeting. I'll also copy the code officer to the town. And because of the, you know, the magnitude of this issue and the zoning implications of this issue, we'll also copy the town board, because the town board are the ones responsible for the, uh, the modifications to their code, to the definitions to the new code that's so, uh, just, just to close, uh, close out where the, where we're going with next steps on that. Uh, and now we go on to another item on the agenda. We do have, uh, on the Zoom is attorney for, the attorney for the town of Canton, Eric Gustafson has, has joined us on, on the Zoom.
So is Eric on for the whole time or just for the biodigester?
For the biodigester.
He, he was on for a little bit of the last.
Yeah, this is Eric Gustafson. Good evening, everyone.
He's been standing by since about.
Listen, I was listening to the, uh, the fascinating discussion, but, um, just, and I know it's maybe beating a dead horse given that the action tonight, but I think, uh, you shouldn't assume that the town of Canton code enforcement and, uh, dog control officers aren't taking steps to enforce the code because those are both very well underway.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. So I will be presenting to you tonight, uh, a local law that was referred to us by the town of Canton to regulate biodigesters. I have been in conversation with Eric on, uh, the local law and I've essentially clipped segments of the local law that'll be included in tonight's presentation. The statement of purpose for their local law is to advance and protect the public health, safety, welfare and quality of life for town residents by creating regulations concerning anaerobic digester systems. Uh, it's to provide a regulatory scheme, ensure compatible land uses, mitigate impacts of anaerobic digesters and to create synergy between, uh, digester development and the comprehensive plan. In the local law, draft local law are some definitions that I wanted to share with you tonight that talks about how it's defined. It's a facility with a purpose to use anaerobic digestion, uh, to convert livestock and poultry manure as the primary catalyst, which then converts it into a biogas to produce electricity, heat and water. Uh, anaerobic digesters may include co-digestion, uh, in which the livestock and poultry manure is mixed in with other organic materials as a secondary catalyst. Yes.
Create water out of this?
Uh, to heat, uh, and water, I guess so. Uh, that's what the clip was from the local law. Uh, from, from the definition of what an anaerobic digester is, uh, it is further defined into both a small and large type of system. This is the definition that was included that defines what a small anaerobic digester is, and I have highlighted some excerpts that I think, uh, should be discussed this evening because what I typically do is examine local laws as it affects farm operations that are located in an agricultural district. And Ag and Markets Law i- in New York State is very strong, and one of the two biggest protections that they offer to farm operations in agricultural districts is protection from unreasonable land use regulations. And so, uh, I've highlighted sections of the local law that identify some issues that I think, uh, warrant some revision. For small anaerobic digesters, it's intended to reduce onsite consumption of utility power and it is small only if it supplies the electrical or thermal needs for onsite use, except that when a property upon which the facility is installed is also receiving electrical power from a utility company and is selling the excess back to the company. So it's making an exception of what a small digester is. I, uh, and later on in my presentation, you're going to see that I'm going to recommend that that be removed because in other, in other Ag and Markets guidelines, farm operators have been given the opportunity to generate up to 110% of the energy that they consume on site. Uh, that happens with wind power, that happens with solar power. The same should also be applied to anaerobic digesters that are accessory in use to the on-farm operation. Uh, and then, small anaerobic digesters use livestock and poultry manure and other feedstock generated onsite by one farm and are intended and in, designed and intended solely to generate power to offset utility costs. Uh, in this situation, I think it's okay for the property owner, farm operator to be able to sell any excess generated, excess energy generated back to the grid, uh, rather than, uh, be penalized and only be able to produce enough biodigest, uh, to meet their utility costs. For large-scale anaerobic digesters, it's anything above and beyond what is consumed on site or what is needed on site and supplies, uh, and is supplied with manure from more than one farm operation. Uh, and those are under local review unless it gets to a cap, a capacity of 25 megawatts or more, then we know it goes under Public Service Commission Executive Law. Further on into definitions, there is, uh, a definition for dedicated use building, and I've highlighted here for prior discussions that we have had in the past about regulating battery energy storage systems, uh, is saying that the intended use is only for battery storage, energy generation or electrical, electrical grid related operations. I'm going to recommend further down in my presentation that that actually be removed because we have pretty good model land use regulations, uh, available on how to review and regulate battery energy storage systems. Because of the inherent risks that are associated with battery storage systems, those should be set, subject to a separate review all to themselves. So that is highlighted, uh, with the recommendation that that be omitted. Now, uh, after the definitions have been provided, uh, the law needs to specify where this type of use will be permitted, and it sort of ties in hand to hand, uh, with our last presentation. The town of Canton is currently in the process of getting ready to adopt a new set of land use regulations. Right now, in their current code as it exists today, agricultural uses and accessory uses are allowed in the rural zone, in the residential zone, as well as in the commercial zone. Once their new code is adopted, agricultural uses and their accessory uses are allowed in the rural zone, residential agriculture zone, mixed use zone, hamlet and commercial. So let's take a look at the current zoning map, and I do apologize that the font that you see here is very, very small, but everything that you see in brown here under the current zoning map is considered the rural district. The intent of the rural district is to delineate areas that are suitable for agriculture, rural and open land areas, and to provide acceptable, compatible growth diversity, yet maintain the town's rural character. And so you see here, uh, permitted use, first item is agricultural, uh, uses and agribusinesses, and then some permitted accessory structures and other uses that are allowed by special permit. In the current code for residential and commercial districts, purpose of the residential zone is to protect and enhance the existing residential use while providing for orderly residential growth and development. Permitted uses in the residential zone, agricultural uses as defined, uh, as in a certified agricultural district as defined in Ag and Market's law, and that those uses are subject to site plan review only. In the commercial district meanwhile, delineate areas appropriate and general for special commercial uses. Uh, and here we sort of see some pyramid zoning that we have referenced in the past. Anything that is allowed in the rural zone and residential zone and hamlet zone, guess what? You can also do it in the commercial district. So, that's under the current code. In the new code that will be adopted at some future date by the town, uh, here's where agricultural operations are allowed. Anything that is colored in, uh, like a gray, anything that is colored in yellow, anything that is colored in purple, uh, anything that is colored in red. So more zoning districts are now being created. Uh, we just talked about this at our, at our recent planning board meeting where you took action on this, but these are all the zones where agricultural uses are allowed. Uh, where it would not be allowed, uh, would be in the upper and lower management, uh, WMA. In the new code, agricultural uses are allowed here as permitted, P, 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 P. But in the, in the new code, alternative energy generating equipment is being listed as being allowed in the WMA. Uh, I highlighted that to recommend that that be struck. I know, uh, we could do one of two things, add biodigester to this schedule, uh, as well as eliminate the P for alternative energy systems that are accessory. Now on to standards for small digesters. In Canton's local law, they are recommending a minimum lot size of 10 acres. What I am recommending is that this be revised so that it's consistent with minimum lot size requirements for principal agricultural uses. I don't believe that the minimum lot size requirement is 10 acres for agricultural uses in, in those zones. Uh, it is recommending a side yard setback of 100 feet, but 400 feet from any residential structure other than the property owner. I believe that should be reduced to 100 feet so that it can be consistent with what has been deemed reasonable by the Department of Ag and Markets under Ag and Markets law. The front yard setback is 100 feet from the edge of a right of way, that's fine. Their current land use regulations, uh, reference what are called hours of. Their current land use regulations reference what are called hours of operations with regard to truck traffic. We know in other land use projects that hours of operation has been challenged in court. And so my recommendation is, don't talk about hours of operation, but instead revise the local law to require that the applicant specify a haul route, the size of the vehicles that will be traveling to and from the biodigestor, and the number of vehicles per day with start and end times. So you're getting the same type of information, but you're providing real specific details as to what you want. And then also on the site plan to depict ingress and egress and the circulation onsite. What was not specified in their dimensional standards or requirements is where the interconnect will take place. And so a recommendation is that the site plan depict the location where the interconnection will occur. For the decommissioning of small sites, with some of these very large dairy operations, you're going to see a large biodigestor. In their current language, they're talking about, in the event that the property owner fails to remove the facility, there may be some arrangements where a biodigestor is put in place by an applicant who is not the property owner and a lease arrangement is in place. I recommend that the reference to a property owner instead be referenced with an applicant in the event that a lease arrangement is made. For large-scale biodigestors, we've already seen one being proposed in Lisbon. We have seen a quote-unquote "small biodigestor" being proposed on the Stafford Farm in Lawrence. What I suspect is going to happen in St. Lawrence County and elsewhere in the North Country is that you will have one farm operation serve as the host for the manure biodigestor, but be designed large enough to accommodate inputs from farms that are in the vicinity. Right now, the way the local law is written is that the large-scale biodigestors may not necessarily speak to that arrangement. And I think if you have a manure digester that is cited on a farm operation, not off-site, it will still be protected under Ag and Markets Law, even if it's receiving inputs from other farm operations. And that's the reason why I'm making a recommendation that these dimensional standards be lowered because I think they will be challenged under Ag and Markets Law. So instead of going with the 30-acre minimum lot size requirement, be consistent with what is the minimum lot size for agricultural uses in those zones, reducing the side yard setback to 100 feet, reducing the 500 setback from any neighboring residential structure back to 100 feet because you see that with manure application elsewhere in the county, and that is deemed to be reasonable. A front yard setback to be reduced from 250 to 100. Same language with regard to hours of operation, and same recommendation to depict where the interconnection will occur.
Is this, are those setbacks related to the actual digester when it comes to the large scale? Or is that also to the pipeline that might be installed to feed that digest?
I think it would be the digester, the facility itself.
Do you need to address the pipeline for the large scale? If that's, if that's an option as we saw in Lisbon?
I don't know the answers to that. And I think it's because the pipeline is already there, unless it's going to be constructed or installed underground. I had not considered that question.
Yeah, which pipeline are you referring to?
I mean, the manure, the feeding, the feeding part to the digester, not the pipeline, the gas output.
Not everybody would supply it with a pipeline.
But in the case that there were one, I'm wondering if we need to address that since we've already seen it on another project. The next phase is that? And we had questions about that.
The interconnect with the gas line, a, just a suggestion, make the project viable. They want to do is, the best place to have the interconnect is actually at the property on to the digester because usually they need to go on a public right-of-way to transmit. If it's not owned by a public utilities, it's very difficult to be, for any government entity to permit something in the public right-of-way that is not a public utility. So it would be to basically be converted from a farm-owned operation to a public utility where it's being just the distribution. Because other highway law, I can permit a public utility, not necessarily so easily to permit a private use. We're crossing private property. The county controls the right-of-way out of the property. So there's property rights issues.
In the event, in the event that the pipeline goes off-site, off the property?
Yeah, like there are, there's one in St. Lawrence County right now that's supplying a, a bell or a factory. So it's a public utility that changes kind of ownership of who owns the gas line. The public has to become like a public utility.
Trying to think how that was addressed in the Lisbon project. I think the utility interconnect was on the same side of the road as.
It was, as the biodigestor.
That's what I'm saying, that's my suggestion.
There, so that, yeah.
But also then running down the road, where does it become a public utility? Because it doesn't, you know, running it down the public road can really happen. If it's farm-owned or corporate, that farm corporation-owned, it would be, need to be a public utility. Then it's some different laws to control public utilities for a private line going down the roadway.
Does that apply to electrical lines and?
It does, yes. Right, like the public utilities, that's where, you know, the public service. And that's where I can permit a telephone line to go down the county road.
So it needs to depict where the privately-owned transmission line travels on the property and off-property, and then to submit evidence of permission to, to.
To transmit.
To transmit off-site. But then also show where the connection is to the public utility.
Right. And that would need to be basically at the facility, just to make it viable.
Did you get that, Eric?
It's a little bit hard to hear, but I think I got the gist of it. But you know, the, the local law does require a diagram detailing the layout, the associated components, the piping, and all the equipment. So I'm, I'm having a hard time understanding exactly what the concern is.
It sounds like there is a concern about granting permission to extend a privately-owned pipeline off-site. And so as a part of the application process, the applicant would need to submit evidence that permission has been granted to extend the line off-site. And then to depict where that private line connects to the publicly-owned line in a right-of-way.
Yeah, but isn't, isn't that governed by the Public Service Commission? I mean, we, we don't, is the, the local zoning authority, we don't control where Liberty Utilities puts its lines, that's a Public Service Commission.
No, but where it connects to the public service line.
What, so, so is the concern if, if they're crossing other people's land? If there's easements across other people's lands?
Yes, I think that, that evidence be submitted to show that those have been granted.
Okay, so, so it's like a site access issue is what you're concerned about.
Evidence of easements being granted.
Basically, yes.
As needed.
Right, if, if they are needed, correct. Okay, thank you, Don. Okay, and then as of today, I, I reached out to Jason, oh man, Mulford, who delivered a presentation either to this board or to the Farm Line Protection Board not too long ago about the, their involvement with renewable energy systems. And I, I put the touch on him and I said, hey, when does Ag and Markets weigh in on biodigesters? Especially if it is sourcing from more than one farm? And he gave me some nuanced information. Of course, if it's a biodigestor that is accessory in nature to the principal farm operation, they would receive protections under Ag and Markets Law. Where Ag and Markets Law influence diminishes is if the facility is not cited on a farm operation in an agricultural district. I am of the opinion that we're going to see more large-scale farm, excuse me, large-scale biodigestors on farms in an ag district, but being sourced by multiple farm operations. So even though he doesn't necessarily speak to it in the excerpts that he shared with me in an email, I think that, I think it would be in the town's interest to share their proposed local law with Ag and Markets to see if it will work or if it would be challenged. Because I don't think the town of Canton is going to be the only community in the state that's trying to come up with these types of land use regulations. And I think it would, would serve in the town's interest to consult with them to say, is this going to fly? So these are the recommended conditions of approval. Strike the exception for small anaerobic digesters definition because farm operations are allowed to produce up to 110%. And to revise the definition that all, that also allows the sale of excess energy to the grid. Strike the reference to battery energy storage systems from dedicated use building definition and subject those to a different, separate review. And we can provide the town with the model regulations if they haven't already been considered for adoption. This is for Don. Require a county highway access permit anytime new access is proposed off of a county route. But I think that would also apply to a state highway. Revise the minimum lot size requirement for small digestors to be consistent with what is required for the principal use when it's a farm operation in the applicable zoning district. Reduce setback requirements for small, small digestors to 100 feet to be consistent with manure application requirements as allowed under Ag and Markets Law. Strike the reference to hours of operation. Depict the location of interconnect to gas pipeline. And we will also add, submit evidence of easements being granted. Revise the decommissioning language for small anaerobic digestors from property owner to applicant because there will be instances when it's a lease arrangement between the property owner and the developer. As for large anaerobic digestors, again, make those revisions because I suspect large digestors will be situated on farm operations in an agricultural district. And so reducing those setback requirements and minimum lot size requirements avoids a future conflict by the Department of Ag and Markets who may feel that those are unreasonable. And then for non-binding recommendations, I think it would be good to include in the statement of purpose of the law to talk about what benefits the biodigestors can provide. It facilitates optimum nutrient management from farm operations. It can significantly reduce manure odor. It creates an energy resource by capturing methane, and it helps support the community's agricultural economy. As for references with regard to community benefit agreement, depending on the size and the volume of truck traffic, you may want to consider including a road use agreement as a part of that provision. Revise the new zoning schedule that's about to go into effect to include biodigestures in the schedule. And then to revise the accessory renewable energy system to not be allowed in the open space zone. And then a friendly suggestion to forward the local law for review by Ag and Markets to ensure that there will not be considered unreasonable on-farm operations in the ag district. Those are my comments, presentation, and recommendations. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Don, sorry, I do. The other, some of the new regulations that are being proposed by New York State, we can see, we can see where DEC is going to require organic recycling from colleges, hospitals, and those types of organizations where they have to dispose of food waste. And one of the areas that they're looking at is maybe, especially in rural areas, is working with the ag markets to use their digestion for organic matter that would be disposed of from these institutions. So that's something that Beyond Waste is targeting. So is this, would this allow that if it's some non-farm uses of being pigged on, so to speak, by say like Clarkson or St. Lawrence University? Pension waste?
That's a great question, because I know it's referenced as a secondary source of fuel, but.
Well, they do it already in Maine. Maine requires places to get rid of like cooking oil and all that. It's actually a terrific thing to add to a manure digester because those kinds of products, when you put them in there, actually greatly increase the yield on the digester. It can make it a lot more efficient.
And I think it's addressed under the secondary catalysts.
Right.
I think.
I was just wondering about.
I think it is. The, the nuance is though, does Ag and Markets weigh in? If, if you are going, if the DEC or local land use regulations identify. I think, I think what Ag and Markets was trying to tell me is that it's getting increasingly complicated to protect these types of farm operations as be, if they become more community-like facilities. So I think it would be allowed, but I'm not sure. And I think it should be allowed. I think it should be allowed.
Allow that.
Yes.
But you know, then you've got Ag and Markets, you've got two different entities. I was just wondering if they could work together, that's all.
You would hope, yes, yes.
But also just look at that would allow for, not restrict it, I guess. Because I think that's what, it would be good if it wouldn't restrict Clarkson's food service from delivery.
It has not been identified as something that is prohibited, but the very fact that it is included or identified as a secondary catalyst works in its favor.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, the local law anticipates organic waste generated off-site without limiting that to solely farm waste.
Okay, that's great, that's great here.
Yeah, that's, that's under the very definition of the large anaerobic digester.
Okay.
And Matilda, before we, we finalize the, the, the recommendations, the one thing I wanted to go back to was the definition of small anaerobic digestors. And I think I want you to look at the exception one more time because the exception is designed to allow a classification of us to remain a small anaerobic digester in the event they are selling small portions of what they use off-site or back to the utility. That's, that's what the exception is for, right? It's not an exception from the definition of small anaerobic digester, it's an exception from the requirement.
Now I see what you're saying. Because the way I read it, Eric, is that only if, the words above where the highlighted section is, only if it supplies electricity or thermal power for onsite use, except that when a property, I misread it the other way. I think, I think that this exception was making it no longer a small anaerobic digester. That's how I read it.
And it's not. It's designed to ensure that even if you're selling excess off-site, if the primary purpose is to supply onsite electricity and you have extra and you're selling it off-site, it makes it so that you can still remain a small anaerobic digester.
Okay, that was not clear to me in the way that I read it because of the word "except." Maybe changing that phrase so that it, it doesn't lead to future confusion because I thought that exception meant it was no longer qualified as a small anaerobic digester. I thought if you, I thought this, the way this read meant, if you're starting to sell to the grid, you're no longer small, you're large.
Yeah, but the, the. Yeah, but the, the, the portion of the sentence before that clearly takes away that interpretation, right? It says a system is considered a small anaerobic digester only if it supplies electricity or thermal power for onsite use, except that when the property is, you know, um, receiving electrical power from a utility, excess electricity can, uh, not needed, presently not needed, may be sent back to the utility company. I don't know how, how I would make that any clearer that the exception applies.
Me either. It's nine fif- nine, ten in the evening, me either. So let's think about it. I'll, I'll try to come up with something.
The, the only comment I would make is you're probably not going to see small digesters. They just aren't efficient. They're really hard to keep operating, hard to keep warm. Uh, they're, they don't make economic sense.
Because of the economies of scale?
Because of the economies of scale, but.
They would get a D.
The surface to volume ratio is pretty high, so you can't keep them warm enough in the winter. That's why some of these are shut down that are, were smaller when they were built. So you probably got to have this in here, but I think it's kind of a move point as far as, I don't think anybody had ever built one that's really small.
And they take labor.
Yeah.
They all take the same amount of management to run a small one to keep it going instead of managing digestion.
I had a question about the definition of, sorry, did I cut you off? No, it was Eric.
No, listen, I, I was just going to chime in and, and say that, you know, that I don't disagree with that analysis at all, but we wanted to make sure that, you know, developers and the farming community understood that this was designed to promote this use and not to discourage it.
That's fine, yeah.
I have a comment or question about the definition of small and large. Um, they seem to be perhaps more specific than they need to be about the products of the, of the digestion, whether it's, the small one specifies electricity or thermal power. What if they're selling gas? The large one doesn't really specify any of that, but it refers to megawatts, which often is used when we're talking about electricity unless if we're talking about other forms of energy. So it's important to give some indication of the scale that we're talking about, but it seems like whether the product is electricity or heat or gas, maybe that's not, it's not necessary to specify that.
Well, from, from the town's perspective, they weren't as concerned and they wanted to make sure they stayed away from regulating, uh, a farm accessory use. And it, it just seemed to us that if you have waste that's being generated off-site, right? It's not a farming use anymore. It's more of an industrial or commercial type of application. That's why the definition of the large anaerobic digester speaks in terms of waste generated off-site and transported to the site.
Yeah, I think if, if it's a facility that is not on a farm operations land, then you can regulate the heck out of it and Ag and Markets won't get involved.
But if it's on a farm, then it's, Ag and Market says it's part of the farm.
Correct. And that's where, and I mean, that's what we saw in Lisbon is that you're going to see a farm operator say, I want the digester on my property because it's conveniently located next to my farm operation.
But is it necessary to specify what the products of that digestion?
Well, and I do agree with the megawatt, kilowatt, whatever, because it's not all going to be electric as we see in Lisbon.
Could be firms, it could be lots.
Yeah, so, so, um, it, I don't know, I, it seems like this is oddly specific. There may be some other product coming in the future that we don't even imagine right this minute, but we're thinking in mostly in terms of electricity. Should it be more generic than that?
Yes.
Just energy. Energy measured in some generic watts. Newton meter foot.
How about herbs?
Herbs, that's a good one. I don't know, I, I, it just seems that maybe it would be more durable if it didn't get into that specificity.
Well, that, you know, that particular notation, although, I don't know, maybe perhaps not needed, it doesn't hurt anything because it's just a statement of the obvious law. It's just a note of what the law is.
So if it were to state electricity and thermal power, does that cover gas? Or should it also?
That's how they, that's how they measure gas, right, is in thermal power.
Well, like equivalence, but it's not really heat yet.
Just leave it energy.
Yeah. Energy and fuel.
Energy for onsite use.
Energy or fuel.
Energy.
Fuel gets converted.
Just reference energy rather than electricity or thermal power.
Because gas is not energy. It will be used to generate. The water one, I think that was a good catch. There is probably water.
Oh, there absolutely is.
Yeah.
And methane, if they.
Yes.
Sulfur dioxide, water.
But it's not one of the important.
It's not a, it's a byproduct, right? Yeah. Okay, thank you, Kitty. Any other comments or questions, uh, about tonight's presentation?
A lot of work, good job.
Yeah, really, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, more comments, discussion, questions, motions?
Hope to accept.
Andy, second. Dan Huntley. Got in before you, Sherry. All those in favor of, uh, accepting, approving, um, what do you word that, Matilda?
Approving the local law with conditions and non-binding recommendations as listed. And, and with the amendment, uh, concerning energy, referencing energy in the small digester.
That's what I said.
Definition.
Sound like what you said.
All those in, in favor of approving this, uh, this local law?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? None. Thank you, that passes.
Thanks, Eric.
All right, thanks, everyone. Have a nice evening.
Thank you.
See you later.
So what are we, half done now?
Two-thirds. Two-thirds.
Last one's about ice cream. That's, thank you for saving that.
That's right.
Make sure you use the timer for the ice cream.
We got, you have three minutes, three minutes. Yep. So, yeah, Preston's going to take on this last, uh, project. Again, we, uh, go right to work, so we, yeah, we'll get ready.
Uh, so, yeah, this project was, uh, a, um, uh, a, uh, proposition for a parking expansion on a Osmond's Marina, fifty-four East River Street in, in Ogdenburg. So we have brief just description of the project. The applicant has proposed a two-phase construction plan. Uh, so for phase one, it involves just site work to, uh, the parking lot. And then phase two, uh, construction of the one thousand square foot ice cream shop. And both phases will be in the middle of two fall this year and spring this year. As far as comments, our first concern was that wastewater and sewage. The lot is currently vacant, so it's not connected to, to utilities. Uh, but the applicant, uh, next year, this layout plan. Uh, we have our plans to connect to U S C's utilities right here in the middle, you know, wastewater system. I will offer a quick definition as the, as defined in the city lib, which are used to code for a restaurant as a, for a commercial establishment where food and drink are prepared, served and consumed primarily uh, within the principal building. Uh, staff does not feel that, uh, this establishment fits this definition uh, as from the, uh, from what we had gathered, uh, the product will not be consumed primarily within, uh, establishment. Uh, so therefore it would follow under other retail. Uh, so that brings us to our last concern, which was our parking. Uh, so the city of Ogdenburg municipal code requires one parking space per four hundred square feet of gross floor area for these other retail commercial services and offices. Uh, this means the applicant will only have to provide two point five spaces for the city code. And as you can see here, uh, thirty-four spaces, uh, provided in the layout plan. Uh, so obviously the applicant exceeds, uh, by exact thirty-one point five parking spaces. Uh, they may wish to consider, uh, reducing the size of the parking booth so as to. Space. Staff does also acknowledge though that this parking could go towards the, uh, arena itself right here. Uh, but that brings us to our, our recommendation. That they, uh, consider reducing the, uh, parking area to allow for more green space, uh, a lot. So I'm skipping around here a bunch, but I hear some of these actual pictures of the site. Uh, this is taken, I believe, right here in the battery, uh, for this, down here in the site, uh, away from the building. And then this one here is, uh, the other side of that. Around here where the fire hydrant is, you know, around this area.
That, that's where the ice cream stand's going to be?
Yeah, right here, uh, right around where my house is hovering.
And they want to reduce parking? I was there the other day and there was not a place to park.
Yeah, they are, yeah, that's what they're, the, the proposal is for.
It was full, full.
Was it, was it full? Was this whole grassy area was more?
People were parking on that.
Yeah.
For the ice cream? No.
The re- and sure, the restaurant is in.
In the building.
In the building, yeah. The building that we see there, right? So, yeah, moving the ice cream, there's a, currently the ice cream shops in that building as well. It is, where is it now, you know?
I don't know, there is an ice cream shop now.
Okay. I don't know if there's an ice cream shop, but the applicant did state that, uh, they have product in the, uh, in this building right here, that they would just move to the ice cream shop.
They won't, maybe they sell, I, I, I've never had it there, I don't know. So then the parking lot is intended to provide parking for both the restaurant and the ice cream.
That's what it's.
And then they have boat rentals too, or boat, um, slips. How many boat slips per ice cream cone, Danny?
That's a good one.
I will say this, when Town Line and Brazier went through, because it straddles the lot, Town Line actually, um, opened, I thought initially, oh, that's a lot of black. But there are times, depending on the flavor of ice cream, where you can't even park. They're parking in the rake parking lot and walking over. So this reminds me of like a Donnelly's Town Line.
Also depends on the time of the year, like this week, they probably couldn't sell ice cream if they were giving it away and two weeks ago when it was ninety.
Right.
I can eat ice cream anytime, at any temperature.
How can you hate ice cream? Any smoking.
Really? No, he does love it.
I do love it.
I was like.
Sherry, it.
There's really, I mean, I'm surprised that they wouldn't agree to that cut out parking. Because there's times, I mean, especially when it's nice to, that place is packed. So it's kind of two different goals, like the ice cream shop, but then the parking lot.
Is to me, other land uses.
Both requirements.
And you're not requiring, you're just saying it's a considering, if you far exceed the, yeah, you could if you wanted to, like, okay.
Okay.
It, it, the recommendation is now basically approval with this suggestion or recommendation that we're considering reducing parking.
Anything more?
I would movely, uh, approve with suggestion if they chose to do less parking, I could.
Julia and Sherry. All those in folk, in favor of approving with that one suggestion? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, that passes. Thank you, everybody. That gets us through, uh, the first half of the page.
I was hoping to see for the first project.
Yes, thank you, yes.
Exactly.
That would have been good.
Pretty detailed, for sure.
Yes. Uh, so we're on to reports and I will yield the executive committee report to Andy because I missed the executive committee meeting.
We basically talked about the ones except for the one that was added. And we sent one back, uh, based on the local action we talked about was upon the fence, but we'd seen it before. One of those.
Yes.
And so other than that, we just went through everything that you've seen tonight and it went well.
Or the legislators, Dan?
I'll hit a couple things, uh. A second family court judge for St. Lawrence County and Forest Judicial District was approved. I think that's important because, uh, get families back together, right? Instead of all the time between, it's too long between the problem and solving the problem. That is one of the important things. We decided, this is very much true, and family month also in Zoom. We prohibited the placement of social media application on TikTok on our county-owned devices. And some of the other issues. Guess those are the main things, uh. Any other questions?
Questions, please? Thank you, sir. Don Chambers.
Well, Jason, if you don't mind looking at your email, like, for what I sent to, uh, the clerk of the legislature that I reported to the, uh, list of road board that we're doing this year and, uh, bridges. Uh, unless you want me to go through the detailed, uh, email back there.
Excellent. Thank you.
It's going to get all long.
Thank you, Don.
In the minutes, leave it to the minutes.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for Don? Uh, anything under state of the county grounds we look? Staff report.
Okay. Thank you, Kitty. Thank you all. A long meeting tonight. I appreciate your patience. Uh, and I just wanted to give a little more background on, I hear that, uh, for a first meeting, a first county planning board meeting, it was, it's quite a duty. So we, uh, we experienced a lot, saw a lot. In terms of breakdown of, of how we're, uh, we're going to allocate, uh, job boots for them. Preston will primarily be involved with county planning board work. Sam is going to be working with, uh, the environmental management council. Uh, there probably will be times when, uh, things will cross over as have been in the past, but. The, uh, the work, uh, we've, uh, we have been, uh, filled positions since, uh, August of last year. We have a retirement coming up in, uh, silver month, half. Uh, with John Tengush leaving us, so, uh, we're going to be putting these guys to, to work in a lot of different areas. Uh, but, uh, wanted them both to come to the meeting tonight, just so they get familiar with the, uh, the, uh, the jobs that, that you do here and, uh, what other. Uh, another quick thing I just want to mention on the staff report is, uh, well, more in line with what we have, uh, coming up next month. You thought this was a long meeting?
There's going to be pizza.
Hey. We just, we, uh, we have been notified that we'll see another solar project, uh, next month. Uh, a large twenty megawatt array in the town of Sina. Uh, Roosevelt Road, uh, we've seen projects, two or three projects, uh, for this parcel of land. The most recent was soyway products. We looked at that in twenty twenty. That never developed, uh, but, uh, we'll see if this does, but a pretty good chance that, uh, that we'll at least see a project on a solar array in Sina. Uh, we've got a subdivision in Brazier, another subdivision in Brazier that I'm sure is very, very exciting for, uh, Julia, uh, who's got an interesting use variance in Norfolk for a, uh, which is, um, I've got to do some research on that, on. which is, I'm going to do some research on that, on regulation. There, there's still a lot to figure out on that one, but, but it's use variance, so that'll take a little harder look. Matilda, there was one more that you-
Town of Norfolk submitted today a local law on adaptive reuse of foreign institutional uses, namely churches. So we'll take a look at that. And then we received a couple of phone calls that were of interest. One was an inquiry on battery storage regulations in the town of Hopkinton for a site outside of Nickelville, and then also outside of Nickelville Animal Sanctuary for up to 200 dogs.
You know.
Oh, boy.
Is it the same guy? No, it's a different person. But I haven't heard any follow-up since then. Those are just telephone inquiries.
One, one thing you need to know, and then I heard say it in the 501(c)(1) thing, the 501(c)(1) sheet doesn't as a kennel is not going to be classified as a sanctuary. It's under definition that they meet the law. Kennels are not considered, actually, you're transferring money, you're renting places. That's income. That's not tax exempt. Sanctuary is for your tax exempt. You're not taking any money. That's different. You're taking donations. That's tax exempt. So you can pay yourself.
Yes.
Most definitions under real property tax law, so that's differs. A lot of people come in and say, well, I'm tax exempt. Well, no, you're not tax exempt until the assessor says you are. Because you think you are, that doesn't prove the allegations that you are. I prove it to the assessor that you meet the qualifications.
All right. Anything more staff report correspondence announcements?
Well, I've now spent Thursday, June 29th, goes along with executive committee, next on Thursday, 29th. That day is a technically scheduled visit to a solar facility in Armpryor, Ontario. The E E F has reached out to staff to see if we would be interested in going to do that, so that is, I'm, we're planning to take a county car, and if anyone is interested, we have leave for-
We could have an executive.
We could have an executive. But, but that, that's the plan. That, that date may change, so to say, it's tentative, but, but that is, they've been pretty good at that. They made that, that offer some months ago and, and they're coming, coming good on it, so that's scheduled for that, that day.
I am not able.
If it's supposed to go, yeah, sure. Okay, then next meeting is Thursday, July 11th.
All right. All right, let's adjourn.
Thank you all. Appreciate all your, your input tonight.